I think we have everybody here. So I'm ready to go, Jacoby.
Great.
Let me know when I can officially convene.
We're good to go.
All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council meeting for today. It's our study session. We're also having a brief, one item consent agenda legislative session as well today. But the balance of the meeting will be with the Planning Commission or the Plan Commission. So excited about that. But let's start the brief legislative session. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Council President Beggs. Can you hear me?
Seems like you can't hear Terry.
No, we can't.
Okay. Council Pres-
Council President Beggs?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Caskart?
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Present.
Councilmember Mumm?
Here.
Councilmember Stratton?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fister. And so, as I mentioned, we just have one consent agenda item. I'll have the clerk go ahead and read it, and I'll give a quick description.
OPR 2021-692, Approval of CHHS Department Grant Applications for the HUD Home ARP Grant Agreement for Serving Homeless and Other Vulnerable Populations by October 22, 2021.
And you might recall that we briefed this at committee on Monday. This is the American Recovery Plan Home Fund Special Grant Award. And this vote would simply authorize the mayor to sign acceptance of this grant award and submit it tomorrow so that it's timely. And it would result in planning money for the city and then eventually several million dollars to assist us with homelessness and housing. And we discussed at committee putting it on an expedited basis so that we didn't have to seek an extension for this. So that's why we have it on today. Are there any? We have Ariane Schmidt here, who's a contractor with CHHS on this issue. If anyone has any questions for her. If you have any questions, go ahead. Councilmember Kinnear.
Hi, Ariane. Thanks for shepherding this. My question is, when we had our budget meeting on Tuesday, there was indication that this was going to be, once accepted, once we got this, that this may be slow rolled. So the money could be extended over a period of time rather than put out as quickly as possible. And I want some assurance that we're not going to do that. We are going to put this money out as quickly as possible because there's a great need in our community right now. So I want to see it implemented as quickly as we can.
Thank you. So I think we really can drive that. The action today is just to acknowledge to HUD that we are interested in the amount that we have been awarded. And then that triggers, as Council President Beggs indicated, our ability to access technical funds for planning that is going to result in what's called an allocation plan. And that allocation plan will be due before the end of the year, and that is when council can put their directives as far as the timeline for the rest of the funding totaling 4.6 million in detail as we embark on that in the next few weeks.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. I'll just, we can do a voice vote since it's a consent agenda. All those in favor of adopting this consent agenda with this one item indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any extensions? All right, that passes. And with that, I'm going to close out the legislative agenda so Ms. Fister can return to her normal duties, and we'll go back to study session. And I wanted to welcome Plan Commission Chair Todd Beiruther and Vice Chair Greg Francis and many members. And I'm delighted that we're going to have a joint meeting with the Plan Commission. And perhaps we could start out, Todd, with just have introductions from your members who are here today.
Sure, well, thank you, Council President, council members. So I am Todd Beiruther, and I've been on the commission probably about five years now in the role of president for about two to three, so thank you.
My name's Greg Francis. I've been, I'm the vice president of the commission. I've been on the commission for now about six years, between being the CA liaison and then a commissioner for the last, past four.
I'm Commissioner Bank, joining via phone. I'm on vacation in British Columbia and have spotty cell service, so sorry to just join by the phone. I'm a relatively new member, been on for about six months.
I'm Michael Baker.
Tim Williams, been on the commission for about six months.
I'm Michael Baker. I've been on the commission for a little over five years.
I've been on the commission for about a year and a half.
This is Mary Winkus, Community Assembly Liaison to the commission. I think this is my second year.
Got everyone?
I think that's everyone.
Thank you for all your service, really appreciate it. And believe the topic is going to be our annual comprehensive plan amendments. And so, Todd, I'll just turn it over to you for kind of a tee up in what you have in mind for us today. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. You know, it occurred to me as introductions, you know, one thing we don't formally represent are any industries or stakeholder groups, but we do have a good representation on the commission as a whole, but even today, across development, architecture, citizens at large, real estate. And so I think that might be relevant in our discussion. So what we have before you is, and in the agenda is a draft declaration with a specific proposal through our municipal code, there's a mechanism for, of course, the council to propose an amendment to the annual comp plan cycle. There also is a pathway for the commission to propose to the council an amendment. And so that's what this declaration of intent allays. We have not had a formal vote on, to push this declaration forward, but maybe the correct way to say it is, is there was no opposition to bring it forward in a study session to discuss with you as a commission before we would formally make a proposal. So in short, the proposal focuses on two land use components within the comprehensive plan focused on residential zoning. The two elements are LU 1.3 and 1.4, single-family zoning in centers and corridors. Now, specifically, this declaration doesn't propose the solution. It's asking for, the question would be, is this worthy of public process that is structured within the annual comp plan amendment? I think we can go deeper into the merits of why we would be asking that, of course, but I think I'll hold there and build into it.
All right, so that's the tee up. Any questions or comments from council members before we get into the reasoning? Councilmember Caskart?
Well, maybe this will be covered in the reasoning. I was just going to ask, is there kind of any specific aspects of those that you're really kind of keying in on that you want to prioritize?
Sure. Well, okay, outlining, in my mind, I think this, we can frame this in three different justifications, each one, in my opinion, worthy of consideration. One is simply, of course, the discussion about exclusionary zoning practices. This is just history and factual, and the discussion is really whether, you know, when, you know, the city or the state will address this. So that's point one. Second point is, of course, the effectiveness of this. In our current housing crisis, is our current policies, you know, effective? And should we have a public process to evaluate with all stakeholders? And then three, I think is a more indirect question of, is it, in terms of the market, is this artificial scarcity, you know, in the housing market, and is this really something, you know, that the city should be stifling when we're in growth? And I think that's an important question just because the context has clearly changed from 20, 30 years ago when these policies were put in place. I think there's a different context. I think there's a different social license and so forth. So I think that's important to raise the question of why, why is this different now than 1991 when Growth Management Act was adopted, or in 2001 when our comprehensive plan was adopted? So I'll stop there and leave to any other commissioners who'd like to make a comment about that, please, or council members.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think it's important that, you know, just to review LU 1.3 and 1.4 prior to the next major comp plan cycle. And whether or not it creates any changes or not, we'll just have to see. But that's where this kind of starts that process and says, okay, we're going to review it and we're going to potentially make some suggestions for changes. So rather than waiting three years for the next major update, taking action on it today or in the next year. Thanks.
Councilmember Mumm?
I think Greg just answered my question, and that was, what's the cycle for us to review? I will say that this week, some of us were at the Spokane County Elected Officials Growth Management Meeting, and the CWPP is going to be worked on next year. And just thinking about the timing of all of these, I guess I turned to Lewis. It's always a juggle when you're coordinating county changes, state changes, and potential local changes. And then, you know, what's required by the state and then what we want to work on. So I'd just like to get your feedback about how something like this would fit into the program. I'm expecting we would need a lot of community engagement. I did bring it up at a neighborhood meeting last night, and I think all 10 people at that meeting would want to come to your next Plan Commission meeting to discuss this. This is of great interest to the citizens. So just putting that to Lewis.
And before you go, Lewis, just the CWPP, if I understand, that's Countywide Planning Process, right? That's what that stands for. Go ahead, Lewis.
Yeah, it's Countywide Planning Policies. It's a group of policies that all of the jurisdictions within the county agree to and work towards when they're developing their comprehensive plan and urban growth boundary proposals. It's kind of a inter-local agreement amongst all the jurisdictions on a level playing field for that dialogue. And that is being discussed at the county and that group of having a year-long process to review those and update those. They haven't had a major review. They were put in place in the late 90s, and I think that there's a desire to look at that, to update that going forward. So that we're expecting that to be a major work program item to help support our council members that sit on that committee. We hadn't planned on kind of our local review until 2023, major, our own city's comp plan discussion. That would kick off, and that needs to be adopted by June of 2026. A thorough update of our capital facility analysis, a look at our land quantity analysis, and our growth strategies would need to be a part of that process. So this would be accelerating that discussion possibly, this proposal.
And that would be my next question, if I can just continue. When you're looking at a massive change like this, we've got to include the capital facilities element for capacity because we saw and heard about yesterday what happens when you don't do that. The county got itself in a major lawsuit, and now they've lost grants because their capital facilities was not married up to their changes that they made. In fact, they kind of, I don't know, Council President might want to describe what the county said about how, what a huge problem that was.
Well, the good news from the meeting is that the county has committed to getting in compliance with the law. Just, one, because it's a good idea to be in compliance. But secondly, they have been paying the price of lost grants and legal expenses and things like that, so I'm glad on that. I just wanted to throw it back to Todd and Greg. If I understand, just for people who might be watching, what you're putting forward is not changing anything in the language, but it is an examination of how our current land use policies at 1.3 or 1.4 either do or don't discriminate or are exclusionary in terms of housing so that we can do that work ahead of the cycle of actually proposing changes. I don't know if you can expand on that. It seems like there was, as I read it, it's an examination whether things were intentionally or unintentionally impacting exclusion and discrimination in housing. So if you could talk more about that, what you're anticipating this would look like for the public consideration.
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, I think formally, it is an amendment process, so it could result in a change. But I think the most important question here is whether is the amendment process then going to get us the best public engagement, stakeholder engagement, most thoughtful, thorough engagement? We've thought about many different pathways on just our role as a Plan Commission to advise, you know, such as subcommittees, workshops, so forth. And I think we've really exhausted, you know, that pathway as being able to include more stakeholders. I think it's valid that the commission as a whole is representative of stakeholders, of course, and we can contribute that way, but short of hearings, you know, which I think are not lengthy enough and don't engage the staff and other professionals in a way that's, that this type of, the weight of this topic deserves. I think the other question, and I agree with Greg, is why these two policies first when it really is a very complex matrix in our comp plan? They all need to be considered as a whole, which will be done in the periodic update in a few years. I think as we've studied this as a commission, and I want to be careful not to speak for the whole commission, but as we have been thoughtful to study this, these are two fundamental questions right now of how we organize, the organizing principles of our planning efforts. And these really, these really affect, you know, kind of the, both the ethical decision and the effectiveness, you know, of all other decisions. And I think we're going through, you know, as you know, in the implementation plan that was added, amended to the Housing Action Plan, you know, we have many activities going on right now that also are judged for consistency against our comprehensive plan. We have comprehensive plan amendments right now that are relying on what LU 1.3 and 1.4 in particular say. And I think we're getting to a point now where we're, if we're just simply calling balls and strikes on what it says right now, we're really stifling, you know, both certain, you know, decisions on implementation of housing and densiting and so forth. But I think before we can get into the actual housing element of the comprehensive plan, I think we need to, as a community, come to some sort of resolution on where we're going to go with the land use element.
I saw Councilmember Caskart first, and Councilmember Kinnear. Go ahead, Councilmember Caskart.
Yeah, Todd, with pretty judgmental might come out of this, I mean, do you think that one possible result of the analysis could be to look at, you know, enhancing what's allowed in single-family in terms of acting types? Is that a potential solution that might come out of this?
Yeah, in fact, I'll repeat what I said in our last Plan Commission. I'll put on my professor hat for a minute here. You know, I think what this is not is questioning centers and corridors as an overall organizing principle. When I say organizing principle, I gave the example of, if I were to teach this to, you know, a sophomore-level architecture student, you know, we start with a diagramming, you know, exercise of how are we going to organize, how we're going to plan the city? I'm oversimplifying this, but as a matter of it's a city, a building, and so forth. Centers and corridors, in short, are circles and lines. We could have chosen something else 30 years ago, triangles and blobs, but we chose circles and lines, and it's valid. There are reasons why that's a valid organizing principle. But from there, that doesn't define the resolution of how we do that. And I think if I were to use that example, in my mind, it's not so much discussion on what goes in those circles. I think that's, you know, in terms of infrastructure and zoning retail, so forth. I think it's a question of what is allowed outside of those circles. And so to your question, yes, I do think it is raising the question on what is appropriate in a residential zone outside of a center corridor.
I appreciate that. And I would just say, I think this is really important that we move ahead with this type of work now, and we don't wait two, three years for, you know, kind of that reopening of the comp plan process. I think it's just, time is of the essence to start addressing these needs, and so I applaud you guys for bringing this forward.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then Commission Member Winkus after, Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. Lewis, this is for you. What projects would have to drop off in order for planning to accommodate this? And of the two pieces that Todd is asking to open up and look at, he did mention that it was, there's more to it than that. So I'm asking you, if we just open up those two pieces and don't look at the greater whole, is that going to really inform us going forward, or is that going to create a piecemeal approach to planning? So it's a two-parted question.
Well, and I think they're good questions. I don't have good answers for that right now. We would want to talk with council about the process, kind of the scope and the charter for this. I think the current proposal is a little vague, so we would hope to put some, maybe more parameters around that. And then, you know, is this a partnership between the administration and council staff? I know you've got a housing group already up and running, too, and maybe we can tag team on that to help get it out for a broad discussion within the community, because this would need to be a heavy dialogue with, and I'm sure there will be a lot of interest from a lot of different neighborhoods. And also, the other component is talking about capital facilities and how that would possibly impact the proposal going forward.
Yeah, a couple things. There was some discussion at the last Plan Commission meeting about how LU 3 and LU 4 cannot really be looked at separately, that all the pieces that relate to that are in the rest of the comprehensive plan. So there's really no way to sort those out and do those separately. So any discussion of them would have to go and look at all the other parts of the plan and look at those as well, which is, in essence, from what I understand from planning, and I've taught strategic planning and done strategic planning, is opening up the entire comprehensive plan. So how would that be scoped? Was the question, one of the questions at the Plan Commission, and I think is still a question that needs to be answered. And the second thing, putting on the neighborhood hat that I wear, is just like Councilmember Mumm said, you open that up right now, you have huge discussions across all the neighborhoods. I'm also a chair of a neighborhood council, and it's going to, it would be huge. So we'd have to be able to plan for all of that. Mine is a single-family neighborhood, and, oh, Lord. So anyway, you can't go into it blindly and think that's going to be a small discussion with minimal impact.
Councilmember Caskart?
Yeah, just two things. I mean, I guess whether we do this tomorrow, next year, or five years from now, the, I mean, the resulting kind of public participation is going to be the same. And so there's obviously going to have to be a big process whenever you do this, and I think sooner is more important. But the other thing I would say is if capacity is an issue, and I brought this up in our budget meeting the other day, we should be prioritizing funding for planning to make sure that it is not an issue. And we could easily, you know, add some additional dollars into the planning budget and think about how we can make sure that we're either outsourcing this or getting staff on board between, you know, now and first quarter of '22 to get this work done. So that's just my thought. know, now and first quarter of '22 to get this work done. So that's just my thought.
And sort of to all these points, Todd, can you just maybe sketch out a potential timeline here? So you're getting some feedback from council today. The plan commission will have a vote to send us a request to consider this as a comprehensive plan amendment. What's the, again, just imagining what's in your brain right now, painting a picture of what's the timeline and the process look like?
Sure, thank you. So just the specific timing of this question relates to, obviously, the annual comp plan amendment cycle. So if, and this relates to our Title 17G, specifically dot 020, dot 025, and then B, that's the process that defines amendment proposals initiated by the city council or plan commission. And so initiation, I'll just specifically read these two sentences. Initiation: Proposals to amend the comprehensive plan may be made by the plan commission at any time and submitted to the city council for consideration for inclusion in the annual comprehensive plan amendment work program. So it's very specific to get, to propose, to get into the annual cycle. So the timing of it is by the end of the year. My understanding is not specifically like an external proposal that goes with the docketing process, but it obviously is up to the council to docket it, so.
Councilmember Mum, and then also would love to hear from other plan commission members, what your thoughts are.
And that was one of the things I was going to ask for, because I'd love to hear from the rest of you. But I do want to point out, I think this is our last quarterly meeting for the year with the plan commission. Is that correct? We have one more in December? Okay. Because maybe what we need to do is allow Louis and his team to really lay out not just what next year does. Usually you do about a two-year look at what's coming up, and then weave that in with this CWPP thing just kind of came up recently with this schedule. And so I think if we got our arms around all the planning activities that are going to be happening over the next two years, not to mention all the very important housing action plan items that we just passed, we're really asking a lot of the plan commission here. And these are very valuable volunteers for us. So we really depend on you. And so, you know, I'm sure some of you are willing to do the work, but let's maybe suggest that we hear back from staff and allow staff to have time to talk to the whole plan commission, to put it together as a package. So when we come back in December, that will help us prioritize and put together what we really need to be doing over the next two years.
If I could follow up with that?
Yes.
So Candace, you're going to be off council. You are on that group with Brian and Councilmember Burke, correct?
Yes, I'm on the CEO, yeah.
Yes, okay. So council president will be the only original member left. There'll be two new people on that committee. And that's going to take, I just want Louis to factor this in, that you're going to have to do some handholding with the two new people, whoever they may be, to get them up to speed on this as well. Because this is not something you just step into and vote. You need to be informed and have really good background information. So I just, I'm putting that on you too as well, Louis.
Yeah, I'm envisioning some ring around the rosy to bring the new council members up to speed, so.
Thank you. Maybe I'd like to react a little bit to more of the question of the long-term timing, backing out from 2026 when the GMA requires a periodic update. Again, and you see in the draft declaration, you know, the whereas, that nothing prohibits us from considering it early. So while this is isolating out the fundamental question, in my opinion, 1.3, 1.4, nothing prevents us from taking the big step and starting the periodic update early. So that is, of course, a big process, but if not now, you know, when? The second external piece is we are asking to have this local conversation, regardless of whether action is taken as an amendment, because, one, we need to prepare for the periodic update, but, two, we simply might be preempted. And with now California adopting these certain similar provisions that Oregon, you know, different mechanisms, of course, but it very well may be decided at a state level. And we should be prepared, you know, locally to how we want to respond as a community. So I put that out there of, you know, beyond the obvious sense of urgency for housing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Burke raised her hand.
Thank you. And sorry that, I don't have my camera on. I'm really sick right now, so I'm just trying to, yeah. Anyway, I am excited about this. It's really good to hear it. I agree with Councilmember Cathcart that we really need to start working on a plan for this. I guess I'm wondering a couple of things. Todd, you kind of had started the conversation with a little bit of historical facts about how this kind of became. And I wondered, if we do do a community conversation, like Mary was concerned about the neighborhoods not wanting to do something like this. I just think that one of the biggest things we can do is bring historical context. And I know that there is someone in our historical department, Logan, who does a lot of work on, he's done a lot of work on redlining. And I just think bringing that historical context in during these community conversations is super key, because while it might not be racist for an individual person today to say that they don't want an apartment complex next door to them, that was the intent of the policy at the very beginning of redlining. And I think that's important for us to hear and understand, because I just think it's really key to moving people to understand what has been going on. Also, something to remember is that, you know, just because we, you know, if we change from today to tomorrow, that anybody could build any sort of housing in any area, it wouldn't change right away. It would take a very, very long time. And a lot of other cities have done this, and it's still single-family. And that's because, single-family housing is not going to go away just because of a zoning change. It's going to go away because a single-family housing, you know, maybe a house burns down, or maybe there's an empty lot, or, you know, all these other things. And so I just think the historical context is something really important to bring on these conversations.
The state did pass an amendment to GMA that regarded adding, kind of looking at some of these components as a part of a housing chapter update when your next major update process occurred. And we're expecting to get some guidance from the Commerce Department on how to go about doing that and what's expected from that over the course of this next year. So that's just another factor to this. And we can send out a copy of that new change to the RCWs that changed to GMA regarding housing.
Councilmember Mum.
But they also allowed a climate change chapter, which I would argue is just as important. So that's why I want to be more, let's really look at what we can do here, because we're working on a sustainability action plan with 108-degree temperatures. So all of this is important, but I think we need to keep that in mind, that when they put this all together, there's some other options for us out there. But I do want to hear, Mr. Baker, have we heard from you? I'd love to hear from you.
I think that we need to address not only L3 and L4, but I think we need to address the whole housing issue. The Association of Realtors just completed a study, which you all will be receiving when we get the final draft of it done in early November. But it talked about the strength of our neighborhood councils and the education process that needs to be taken care of. And even if we started tomorrow on this, we're still looking at a long, long process. So that's kind of my take on it. I don't think we can, you can't address the housing issue quick enough.
Mr. President, if I may, this is Commissioner Bank.
Yes, please.
I'd just love to jump in particularly on the sustainability action plan question and directives from the state with respect to those types of issues. I think those issues are wholly interrelated. I think the more we push development to the outskirts by not addressing some of these issues, I think has a direct one-to-one impact on greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, et cetera, et cetera. So I think, I guess maybe underscoring your point, Councilmember Mum, I think they have to be considered together. And this is, there's a lot of weight here and a lot of sort of competing things. But I think one of the reasons that I've been working with Commissioner President Bayruder to try to talk about some of these things is that we need to begin this holistic conversation. I struggled a little bit with the language that's before you today with respect to proposing changes to 1.3 and 1.4, rather than beginning a discussion about 1.3 and 1.4, because I think the conversation is larger and it is more holistic, and it is very, very large. And it's going to take quite a great deal of time to handle all of these things. And so, you know, I think it's in all of our best interests to bring this up, perhaps even without an agenda, to just discuss and to educate and to convene and give time for all of the processes to play out, so that by the time we get to some of these periodic updates, we've at least had the process and we're not beginning it then and waiting for another several years to sort of have all of these things processed through. Meanwhile, we're building, you know, thousands of housing units on the Rastan Prairie, et cetera, et cetera. And I know there's a big demand factor that's contributing to that as well. But I think it's incumbent upon us to think about this holistically and to begin the conversation as soon as humanly possible, so that we can consider all of these things in their full richness and color.
Thanks for weighing in on that. Other, Commissioner, go ahead, Mary.
One more thing. As an educator, if that's what we're talking about, somebody would have to put together a pretty comprehensive and well-planned agenda to bring, just like the neighborhood councils. Just opening up a conversation, I don't really want to be the one that's going to facilitate that, because I suspect there'll just be a lot of unhappy people. You have to be able to lay the groundwork, and that means somebody has to put together an educational package that can be used by folks in the neighborhood. It can't just be, you know, let's rip the bandage off and start talking, because you're not going to get what you want. I mean, I have to tell you, I was already accused of being a proponent of the sustainability plan because I had somebody come and speak on it, that was in my implicit endorsement. And it was not a pleasant conversation. And that was just one-on-one. You're going to have to have a way to address this and not just open up the conversation, because just bringing somebody who was helping to write the sustainability plan for city council put me at a target. In fact, there are several people who want to now look at everything I've done since I've been a council chair, because I am basically in bed with city council. So you just can't just open it up.
Michael Baker, and then I start, Michael Baker first, and then Councilmember Cathcart after that.
The study that I mentioned that we just completed highlights that very explicitly, that we've got to have an educational plan. And we have a very good outline in the study that does that. It talks about, you know, do you want to have a neighborhood that your kids can live in, that your parents can live in? And it's a very, very good, solid approach. So I will get that to all of you the minute that we get it published.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just in terms of that kind of outreach, education-type stuff, you know, in the 2016 infill plan that came out, you know, that was one of the items that I pushed really hard to make sure was in there, was that we would have this, you know, very strong outreach effort to educate and demonstrate kind of what good infill looks like, and just really show the neighborhoods kind of how this can be done and done well. And so I think you bring together staff, council, developers, you know, both for-profit, nonprofit, and you kind of have a working group that can kind of tour around to the neighborhoods and various, you know, community organizations and really talk about this stuff in depth. And I think that's going to be a really good way that we can educate. And I don't see any reason we can't do that concurrently with this process that would be ongoing at the time.
Greg, Francis?
Yeah, well, I think it's very important to educate the neighborhood councils. As a member of the neighborhood council system, I strongly agree with that. At the same time, we need to recognize that our neighborhood councils don't actually have representative from memory, many underrepresented groups, whether it's renters or people of color. It is a, it is a very privileged system in many ways. And so we need to recognize that and think about the, all the citizens of Spokane, not just the neighborhood council system.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So as we're talking about bringing divergent groups together, we cannot eliminate somebody representing the school district, because as you create more density, you also need to consider the impact that it's going to have on schools. And we need to make sure that we're including our integrated capital management folks, because infrastructure is a huge piece of creating density away from centers and corridors. So all those pieces have to work together. Can't eliminate them. We have to consider them and have those people at the table as well.
Thank you. One other aspect I'd like to put out there is, you know, this, when I say, excuse me, when we talk about, you know, the factual history of planning, I think, you know, I recognize that that's, for those of us that have formal training and experience, professional practice experience in planning or urban design or architecture, engineering, and so forth, that's factual to our, you know, to our disciplines. But I also want to say that in these proud disciplines, they know and can address the solution. And so it's really, you know, it's really encouraging and embracing that we have very strong professionals in planning in the city. We have very strong, you know, designers and architects and engineers that can take this problem on. So it's not just a stakeholder issue. It is really embracing our knowledge and capabilities.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Williams?
I worked as a developer in affordable housing before joining the plan commission, so I have some experience on the challenges of developing housing within the city of Spokane. But I think the key issue here is whether we should be trying to bring the process forward in time to allow for the changes that eventually need to be made. And I think we are in a crisis situation. So I think, admittedly, we have to have capital planning going hand-in-hand. We need to have a good process. We need to work with neighborhoods. But the rent increases are really an unprecedented kind of thing that's going on. I'm a landlord as well, so I'm very aware of somebody moves out, how much more I can move up the rents. And that's the natural inclination of landlords. And the State Department of Commerce did a study on what is the major contributor to homelessness, and what they found was it was rising rents in communities, was the number-one correlation factor between rising homeless rates and rising rents. So I think it's going to be getting worse before it gets better in Spokane. So I just want to, I'm a little bit new to the process of the timing. I realize we need to have a thorough and good process. But I do think pulling things forward, which is what the thrust of Todd's resolution is about, is just important for our community, because the renters are being hurt right now, and supply and demand is how rents are set. So to the extent that we can appropriately influence more supply, that's a very big factor. So just wanted to state my overall kind of opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. The other plan commission members, Mr. Winger, I don't know if we've heard from you yet.
Hi, this is Cliff Winger. One of the things I sort of have a pro- Hi, this is Cliff Winger. Uh, one of the things I've, I sort of have a problem with is, uh, there's a tendency for people to take the whole problem on. And I think what we need is a scope of work, uh, that's doable, and that scope of work could lead to education, infrastructure, uh, those type of things, the school, uh, system. So not take the whole problem on at once, but open it up and see where we need to go as a scope of work in all these other different departments that are included in the comprehensive plans. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, Greg Francis?
Yeah, I, I'm just going to kind of echo what a lot of others have already said here. To me, this is just starting the process, and it's starting the process before the major update. I'm, I think we have a housing crisis. Uh, we have a need for more housing. Like Todd indicated, this does not mean that we're scrapping centers and corridors or any mechanism like that. It's just simply reviewing, uh, what 1.3 and 1.4 are doing for us. And, and perhaps as we explore it, then we know that, all right, well, we're going to have to look at, uh, capital aspects or, or something like that. And maybe that means that it's going to take longer than that year, and it has to be continued for a year. At the same time, if we, if we start it now, then perhaps it can be done before our, our major update. Because if we wait until the major update process, it might not get done, even in major update. Uh, it might take even longer than that. And I'd rather start that process today or in the next year than push it down the road for a couple of years.
Other comments? Right. I'm just gonna, I've been trying to do my best to facilitate the conversation, but I'll just weigh in with my thoughts as just one council member. And, um, that is that these conversations, um, often seem to become all or nothing with all the stakes, winners and losers. Are we going to completely undo single-family residential zones or not do anything? And, um, it often, people just kind of find their reasons wherever they, um, feel on that. So I think, to echo some of the things, I think getting the conversation going sooner rather than later is better. I think that my sense, not a professional planner or in the building industry, but that there is some history, and this conversation is already ongoing in the community. And my, my preference is to channel it into the community engagement processes that we have to address it as a community sooner rather than later because that will give us the most structure, the most staff, a professional expertise, and help us as a community grapple with these issues. And my prediction is at the other end of that conversation, it's not going to be an all-or-nothing solution. Uh, it'll be a Spokane-based solution. And, uh, there'll be lots of wins for the entire city and all the neighborhoods. Um, but I also echo that we are in a crisis. And, uh, the sooner we start addressing it, including the basic knowledge of what our current policy language is getting us or not getting us, the better. So, so I endorse the process. That said, uh, we do have to figure out how to integrate it with the work plan of the Plan, Planning Department that continues to be under-resourced, um, and overworked. And the Plan Commission similarly has a, a very robust agenda more than can be accomplished. And so we have to figure out all the things that we added, the 37 task items to the Housing Action Plan that we put in place as a council, and figure out how to do all those things in a reasonable and realistic timeline that engages the community for our processes. So I'm, just me personally, I, I support this effort. Um, but it really would only be the beginning of a conversation. And it's, uh, probably, my suspicion is that it, as Greg mentioned, it kind of gets us started on it. By the time we get to much action, it might be almost time for the update as well. So I just wanted to throw that in. Uh, Louis, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm going to forward along, uh, an access article. They had done some analysis about the Minneapolis change. Any change to land use codes typically takes 18 to, 18 months to two years really before the whole community starts ramping up. Um, but when Minneapolis did it, they, they haven't seen a lot of use of these tools. They're seeing more development in their vacant lands and in their centers. And so I would want this to be a part of continued effort to look at all of our housing, um, potential areas and making changes to allow more development units in those areas, such as, you know, in our taller, uh, commercial zones and, and other areas where we can actually probably achieve more residential units than, than this kind of change might. Um, I'll, I'll just forward you the access article. We'll get you that latest GMA change also and, uh, share that with everybody, just for some background.
All right. I see Councilmember Wilkerson, and then Mr. Baker, and then Councilmember Cathcart. Go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Just, uh, first of all, Todd, thank you and the Planning Committee for this work and bringing it forward. I think it all needs to happen. I see the challenge is, what we all struggle with, is this community engagement piece. Uh, we know we have neighborhood councils, but there are many, many more people in Spokane that are not engaged in neighborhood councils. And then how do we make sure that we are doing an outreach to hear those voices, especially from communities of color, that have been historically underrepresented, uh, especially in this arena of planning, uh, for, for city growth? So I think that is our first challenge. Uh, it's not just planning. It's other areas of the city that we're trying to do work, is that we have not really engaged our city in how to move it forward. So again, thank you. I am open to all ideas, but I think we need to start at some point. Um, we might talk this to death and, uh, don't get off first base.
Um, Michael Baker.
I just wanted to leave a, a number with you guys, and this is something to kind of ponder. In 2011, 3.1% of our homes sold for $400,000 or more. The first half of this year, over 40% of our homes have sold for $400,000 or more. That's a heck of an increase. And that's marked by-
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just say, uh, to, to Louis's point about Minneapolis and, and thinking about kind of alternative areas where we would be developing, maybe tall development. I, I have no problem with tall development, and I think you have to address all aspects of, of both, of, of that, the housing market. The problem though is, and, uh, is the lack of ability to do condos. And so when you can't do that, you're, you're essentially creating one type of housing. Again, needed, but it's rental housing, and it just, it limits the opportunities for those homeownership, uh, uh, pieces. And so, you know, we, we have to be looking across the board at all these different, um, solutions. And one of the benefits of enhancing, you know, our current zoning with more housing options is more fee simple housing. And I think that that's something that's really important to, um, to address. There's a lot of people who are ready to take that step into homeownership. They just, there's just no availability, or the, the costs are just too explosive right now. And so, um, if we're not looking at those pieces, then we're, we're missing a really important element, uh, right now, especially with, with the condo laws in the state.
And I don't know if there's anyone else that was raising their hand, just scanning? I don't see that. Anyone on the phone, if you're here, feel free to just chime in. Um, okay. And we're getting close to the end of our time that we thought we would, um, talk about it, but Todd or anyone else on the commission or Louis, are there any other kind of areas of mutual interest of the commission and council that you want to bring up? Um, since this is one of our meetings?
We actually have another joint meeting scheduled between Plan Commission and Council to talk about the overall, uh, work program in November 11th. So it's coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Great. All right. All right. Um, then thank you, everybody and Plan Commission members. Thank you for your service. I, I know it is often thankless, and there's somebody mad at you, no matter what your position is. Uh, so please, thanks for doing this work. It's the only way that we can move forward as a city. And, um, keep up the good work. And thank you, planning staff, for the same. I think you're in the same category. I've often thankless, and you're often in somebody's gun sights, uh, figuratively. So keep up the good work. Try to get you those staff people. Um, we, um, just at study session, we always have something on ARP. Uh, we hope to be coming back to you next study session with some areas of proposed emphasis on ARP funding from, uh, the council work group next week. Um, and I think we sent out an email to all council members with a copy of the spreadsheet of all the ideas for programs so far and requested that if you wanted to, um, sponsor a particular idea, uh, to make sure you let us know so that we can, uh, get that scheduled. Uh, I, I know Councilmember Cathcart has about six or seven on there that he already has on there. So we will. Our, our goal is to bring them to you in batches. Um, but if there's other council members, if there's something that you really, if you're not in the work group and you're like, hey, that's my, one of my top things, then email, um, our, um, ARP@spokanecity.org email. Uh, or, um, Betsy or Candace or myself, just, just to let us know so that we can keep track of that. Um, Councilmember Wilkerson?
Uh, just a reminder, we will be holding open houses at Ferris, North Central and Rogers next week to get community engagement around these funds. So there is a press release, so tune in, and, um, we hope that you can make it.
Councilmember Mum.
So when you get a chance, if you haven't already, uh, when you crack open the, the first round of, um, suggestions, uh, please do think about how we can collaborate with Spokane Valley and, uh, the, the county who also has ARP funds. And, uh, let Eric Paulson know, uh, for Intergovernmental Affairs because it would be great if a couple of us could take a bundle, uh, that has council support that could potentially be something we could leverage with those other agencies that have funds. We talked about this from the beginning. They might like to see our ideas because we seem to kind of be out front with the community engagement process. And, uh, last I checked, the city of Spokane is in Spokane County. So, um, if you do see a collaborative effort there and would like to go with a team of us, um, to do that and to talk to the commissioners and the other council members, because I know you have relationships with them on other boards, I think this is a good time to start talking about how we can put our money together for the better that the whole community needs.
All right. Thank you. Great points, both of you. Um, anything else for the good of the order today for city council? All right. Seeing none, we'll, we'll be back on Monday for committee, uh, the Public Infrastructure Committee, and then briefing at 3:30. And then we have a pretty full meeting next Monday at 6 o'clock. And I hope everyone has a good weekend in the meantime. Uh, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.